Okay.
Okay, we'll call the October tenth, twenty twenty-three Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Supervisor Lewis.
President.
Supervisor Day.
Here.
Supervisor Ayers. Supervisor Lyons.
Yeah.
And Supervisor McDaniels here as well. We will now have a prayer for the board followed by a pledge of allegiance. Those attending are not required to participate, but would like to join us, please stand.
We pray in a clear voice that we may be granted the knowledge and understanding to do these things we ought to do and have the grace and courage to faithfully accomplish them for the benefit and welfare of the citizens of this our county. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, its standing on nation, under God, in the midst of the
We will hold citizen comments near the beginning of the meeting. We will do our best to take citizen comments remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer comment. To join by telephone, you may dial into one of the numbers listed on the county website. The webinar ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors YouTube channel, also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the raise your hand feature. You can press raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine if you're calling in by telephone. Are any changes to the agenda tonight?
Yes, sir.
I believe we have National Fire Prevention Week. Mr. Day, would you like to read that proclamation?
Proclamation expressing appreciation of the Board of Supervisors of Rockbridge County to local fire departments and firefighters. Whereas the President of the United States traditionally designates the week in which the date of October ninth falls as National Fire Prevention Week. And whereas the men and women, volunteer and career members of the fire rescue department serving Rockbridge County, the City of Lexington and the City of Beano Vista provide a vital service, vital public service by responding to fire suppression, motor vehicle crashes, hazardous material incidents, technical and water rescue needs for our residents and our visitors. Whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand that firefighting is one of the most hazardous professions regarding physical strength, determination, and courage. And whereas safety of our citizens is a primary goal of local, state, and national government. And whereas firefighting is often among the first to respond upon a scene of emergency disasters, be it medical, natural disasters, man-made, to provide immediate and often life-saving assistance. And whereas firefighters participate in numerous hours of rigorous training and continued education in order to enhance the life and property saving skills. And whereas our firefighters continue to demonstrate a high level of committed commitment and dedication to the community and our fellow citizens. Now therefore, we, the Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors, recognize the week of October the eighth through the fourteenth of twenty twenty-three is National Fire Prevention Week, during which all of our residents may join in celebrating the dedication of our local fire departments and firefighters, past and present, and their families who support, allows them to serve the community. Mr. Chairman, I but moving adopt this proclamation.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And Chair votes yes as well. Thank you, Mr. Day. Next up, we have citizen comments. Is there anyone signed up wishing to address the board? Anyone online wishing to address the board?
Uh, no, sir.
Anyone present didn't have the opportunity to sign up? All right, move along. Uh, the September twenty-fifth, uh, meeting minutes. Does everyone have a chance to review the minutes? Any questions, comments? Is there a motion to approve?
I move.
And a second? Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And Chair votes yes as well. Next up, we have a county appropriation resolution, Mr. Harrison.
Um, yes, our total bills for this period is nine hundred thousand six hundred and one dollars and sixteen cents. Uh, we have additional general fund appropriations of a hundred thirty-five thousand for the school transportation office and twenty-seven thousand four hundred sixty-four for the, uh, fleet, uh, services of fuel canopy. Um, just as a reminder on that, that's that has been on the capital improvement plan. Um, actually, it's been on for FY twenty-five and we, uh, because of this condition, uh, we moved it up to FY twenty-four. Um, you've had your, you have your copy of your revenue and expense reports or total revenues, uh, year to date is for the general fund is eleven million three hundred eighty-eight thousand three hundred forty-nine dollars. Expenditures are fourteen million seven hundred fifty-seven, two hundred and thirty-eight. Um, twenty-five percent of the FY twenty-four has passed. Our sales taxes at twenty-six percent are one million one hundred sixteen thousand three hundred eighty-six thousand. Uh, mill's tax is also at twenty-six percent or seven hundred five thousand three hundred fifty and the lodging taxes at twenty-three percent or four hundred thirty thousand six hundred forty-six, typically. Fall, at least in the past few years, has been, uh, actually quite busy for lodging tax revenue. So hopefully we'll, uh, I'll get bummed back up. Um, getting busy, uh, setting up the FY twenty-five budget. So we'll get, start getting, working on that. I'll start sooner than later. The, um, and the bond for the school is still, um, progressing as, as planned.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Is there any questions or comments for Mr. Harrison? Is there a motion to adopt a resolution? And a second?
A second.
All right, Ms. Ayers. Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. Uh, next up, we have, uh, consideration to revisit the surplus property resolution adopted on September twenty-fifth. Uh, Mr. Harrison or Mr. Suter? I'm not sure which.
Uh, this item is to request correction to an oversight that I had. It's your last meeting on September twenty-fifth. At that meeting, we requested and the board approved the resolution declaring county surplus or county property a surplus and directing staff to dispose of a portion of that via public online auction. Uh, one vehicle, uh, in that declaration, uh, was to be donated to the town of Goshen for town use. Uh, subsequent to the meeting, we recognized that there had actually been two requests for the Goshen area. Uh, I saw it and thought there was just one. And there were actually two that were listed as Goshen. I just missed that. Um, uh, the second one coming from the vote, uh, Goshen Volunteer Rescue Squad. The first one was for the town, the second one's for the squad. Uh, they had previously requested a vehicle to allow train, uh, members to go back and forth to training. And we are requesting that the two thousand thirteen Ford Explorer with a VIN number ending in four zero three four zero be donated to, uh, Goshen Volunteer Rescue Squad. And I did attach a revised resolution for your consideration, uh, which, um, would supersede the prior resolution for that portion of it.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Suter? Is there a motion to adopt?
So, so move.
And a second?
I'll say.
All right, Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. Uh, next up, we have consideration of Boxerwood application for designated real estate tax exemption exemption. Mr. Huffman.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, Boxerwood Education Association owns and has owned for some time about seven tax parcels off of Route Ross Road in the Buffalo Magisterial District. In two thousand nine, the BEA applied for and received approval for, uh, a designated tax exemption for two of those parcels, which excluded a non-qualifying residence and any structural improvements and included a condition, uh, for continuing cooperation with the county school system and educational programming at Boxerwood to meet the standards of learning or any other mandatory educational requirements for the county public schools. Um, the BEA has now filed applications for designated real estate tax exemptions for its remaining parcels of land. Do I have to start over?
No, you do not. It's, it's live on YouTube. That's just the, uh,
Okay, um, three of those parcels are, uh, are listed as one at three point two nine acres, assessed value of thirty-nine hundred dollars. The annual real estate tax is twenty-three dollars and eighty cents. Um, another parcel is very tiny. It was for a dam structure. It's point one acre, assessed at five hundred dollars and its tax is three dollars and six cents. And then another is four point oh oh two acres, uh, value of fifty-three thousand six hundred dollars. And the annual tax based on this year's tax is three hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-six cents. Um, I've included in the report, I won't read it to you, but, uh, for a designated tax exemption, um, when there's a request made, there are additional considerations by code for the board to consider. And those are listed in the report, those additional considerations, and the BEA has submitted a cover letter addressing, um, each of those considerations. They are included on board docs for your help in considering this. Uh, Ms. Cole, the executive director, and Mr. Shank, the treasurer of the BEA are here to, uh, present, uh, any additional information for their request and to respond to any questions. Uh, consideration of this tax exemption requires adoption of an ordinance following public hearing. A draft proposed ordinance has been included in your packet, uh, or on board docs. And so if acceptable, because of the timing for publication, um, I'm requesting that the, uh, public hearing be scheduled for November fourteenth.
Same question from this. Is there a, uh, motion to schedule a public hearing for November fourteenth?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Ayers, Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well.
Thank you.
Is there anything else you wanted to add? I didn't mean skip over you. I just. Okay, thanks very much. Thanks for attending. Um, we're going to skip over number nine for just a minute and go to, uh, the appointments. Uh, VACO, uh, the voting delegate for twenty twenty-three annual meeting, uh, at the conference on eleven fourteen. I believe, uh, VACO has requested appointment of a board member or a voting member for the annual meeting.
It's a.
Uh, the, the conference starts on, it, it's kind of, there's kind of a kickoff on Saturday afternoon. And then there's, there's a few meetings on Sunday followed by, uh, um, you know, the annual banquet Sunday night, and then on, uh, Monday is the main day of, of, um, panel presentations, breakout sessions, that type of thing. And then on Tuesday, there's a, there's a business meeting of VACO. Tuesday morning.
So voting would happen on Tuesday? That's, that would be necessary?
Typically, yes.
Hey. Is there there any of the members planning on attending?
I was planning on attending, yes, sir.
Yes, and this is the one I think I've, I've told chaired with all the board members individually that I'm, I haven't missed a VACO in years, well, at the homestead in years. Um, I'm not going to be there this year.
Oh, I was going to say you'd be there to chaperone or.
Try to get some coverage.
But no, yeah, it's, it, it's good and, um, I'm sorry you can't make it this year. Anyway, I would appreciate your support of your board.
So do we need to? I move we appoint Mr. Lewis. All right.
I second.
All right. Uh, all right.
As long as he behaves.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And Chair votes yes as well. Uh, next up, we have the Public Service Authority, Mr. Reynolds. Term expires October fourteenth. Um, I believe we have an application from a, uh, William, William Mike Henry from the South River District. Mr. Day, you want to tell us anything about that or?
I think everybody got his application, but he's the, the tariff and V doc and, uh, is willing to serve. I think he'd be a good member, so.
Is there a motion? All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all right, Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And Chair votes yes as well. So everyone had opportunity to review the staff reports? Is there any comments, questions about those? Are there any others or motion to approve?
Don't move.
A second?
Sure. I was going to say Tom Stanley is there, maybe he. Fine, yes, that's a second.
All right.
We'll, we'll, we're going to grill him in a minute.
Uh, Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. Uh, we will now move back to item number nine, drought discussion. Uh, Mr. Suter, you want to update us a little bit?
Sure. Uh, in, in September, the U.S. Drought Monitor added portions of Rockbridge County to the list of Virginia counties in severe drought. Uh, in past periods of drought, the board has adopted a resolution at times declaring the existence, the existence of a drought emergency. Prior to the board's most recent meeting on September twenty-fifth, I consulted, uh, Virginia Cooperative Extension Agent Tom Stanley, who's with us tonight, thank you, uh, to obtain a recommendation to, to the board. At that time, he recommended waiting on adopting of resolution until after the impacts of then, of the then impending storm Ophelia could be evaluated, uh, keeping in mind that we, we post agenda on Thursday evening and the storm was expected over the weekend. Uh, unfortunately, the storm did not bring as much moisture as we had hoped. Um, obviously, we don't wish for flooding, but we could have used more than they gave us, so, than it gave us, so, uh, and as of no, uh, uh, as of agenda posting on October fifth, no additional rain had fallen. Uh, subsequently, Mr. Stanley revised his recommendation and provided, uh, the documentation, documentation that's attached in your package for consideration. Um, and in it, again, this was last Thursday, uh, he recommended adoption of a drought resolution by the Board of Supervisors. And he is with us tonight to answer any questions the board may have.
That's all right, Ms. Stanley. Could you come up to the podium where the mic is there and, uh, anything you'd like to add to what Mr. Suter just presented?
Uh, the only thing would be, they update, I guess, the drought monitor system is really probably the primary data source that you can look at it. It's, uh, it's based out of University of Nebraska and they update that. Um, I think it updated on Tuesday and they released the map on Thursday and I was a little bit surprised. We were, we were still in the, um, moderate drought designation for this past week. And I would have thought we would have moved back into the severe designation, but, um, they, as I indicated in my report, they've got a system where we can, um, submit our own reports. And I think that the, um, the severity of drought from an agricultural standpoint is, is the timing. So I had, could really hope one would get more, more rain out of tropical storm Ophelia and, but then at the time it was forecasted we'd have some follow-on rainfall, which just has not materialized. And, um, and why it's so critical is, is that hay production in general was depressed. Some farms were, were impacted more than others. One of those is listed on the report I had. He said it's probably thirty percent short and I saw him about ten days later. I said, it's probably more about forty percent less than it usually is it. Um, but I think, um, more significantly is that we're not getting this fall pasture growth. And now we're up against what in all probability will be our, our normal frost, heavy freeze here end of October, November, and we just don't have enough time. Even if we had the rain now, we don't have enough time to really get this bounce back in, in grass growth that we need. So as a consequence, limited hay inventories and so we dip into those inventories sooner. Now, the, the other bigger question is, you know, if the circumstance extends into the winter and then we have groundwater impacts and wells going dry. I only have anecdotal observations and I, I don't have any data, but sure does seem like wells go dry quicker than they used to. It's just my own perception. I've fielded a number of calls and, um, people call and inquire and said they have a well go dry or a spring go dry. And I, I can't, that's purely anecdotal. I don't have any data to go with that. It just seems like, I think we're just pulling more water out of the ground than we did fifty years ago. But that's, like I say, I don't have a good data source to back that up. But, um, I would, I, we got a nice shower yesterday. It wasn't, I have not had time today to look and see what the, what's reported at Lexington, uh, at the sewage treatment plant or Glasgow. But I, I would certainly think we would move back into that severe drought designation on the drought monitor next week. But, um, and I've, our report got a little bit long, but I, I'll kind of explain that, how the drought monitor works and, uh, how those designations can can lead to direct payments for our farmers, but. But, uh, I would, uh, still have that recommendation for drought, drought, drought declaration, and I hope my explanation is that how it fits into the, the, kind of the overall system of drought monitoring both with the USDA and the state. It, it, it has benefit, but it, there's other important data sources too, so.
Good. Like, is there any questions for Miss Pam?
I was just like, say, i- i- in, in, in Mr. Stanley's first report, there was some notation of the difference in it. I, my term is microclimates, but you're just in different parts of the county and, and Northern Rockbridge, to, to me, seems to be a little heavier hit, uh, with the drought. And Augusta County, it of course declared one, uh, in September. Uh, so, um, that's was part of my questioning, you know, uh, uh, thought process here. So, um, I don't want to be here either, Mr. Stanley, but I, you know, I think that's, that, that's where we are for our people. And I did have some feedback, you know, from constituent and other farmers, uh, who, who were thinking that we ought to look at it. So thank you for, uh, continuing to monitor and, uh, I, I support the resolution.
And Northern Hafes County, that's absolutely been, been more impacted and that's been consistent through the spring. Spring was very drought. Further north, you went, it reached north.
Any other questions coming?
This chairman, uh, members of the board, I, I took the, obviously I took the, uh, we, we don't reinvent the wheel. I took the, this resolution from a prior resolution, which came from a prior resolution. And I'm just noting again, I'd forgotten that, uh, uh, Mr. Stanley noted that, uh, should the board drop the resolution, it should be addressed to State FSA Executive Director, Dr. Ronald Howell. I think you can still, if you were going to adopt a resolution, you could still do that, but, uh, I would then send it to the correct place as opposed to Governor's Office. At the state one. For the governor's letter.
I, I support getting it to the right person. Mr. Suter, thank you. If you'd like me to take it, I, 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 I will.
Is that a, uh, motion to approve a resolution? Is there a second?
A second.
All right, uh, Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. Thank you, Ms. Stanley, for joining us and providing insight.
It, but I did, I promised Ms. Ayers a grilling and we haven't had one yet. Did you have other questions?
I just, I just, every time we see somebody, I just love to have reports in, you know, in their own voice. That's all.
All right, next up, we have, uh, board comments. Uh, I'll start out with just, I'd like to take a minute to thank and appreciate, uh, the, the staff and administration at the high school, the Virginia State Police and the Rockbridge County Sheriff's Office for, uh, the job they did today with the incident at the high school. And, uh, you know, that, it's never going to be perfect, uh, but no one was hurt or injured and everybody made it out okay. So all in all, it was a, a, a good situation and, uh, hopefully, uh, everything will be good moving forward. Um, Mr. Lewis, do you have anything?
Do, um, I just wanted to tou- touch on the, the Goshen, uh, vehicles and thank the board for supporting, um, the, the additional people that the one, the one we approved earlier was for the time to be able to manage their, uh, water systems and other things that, that they have. Uh, and this one was for the Goshen Rescue Squad, which has seen, uh, uh, fortunately a resurgence in, um, volunteers and is needing that people to transport for, uh, training, which I think Mr. Suter said, but I just wanted to reiterate that, 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 that's a good thing. Thank you all for, for supporting that for, for our rescue squads, importantly for, for our district. And, uh, also to, to Boxerwood, I had worked, uh, with Ms., uh, Ms. Bailey some years ago on, on trying to get the, this, this bit of, uh, uh, technicality sorted out for Boxerwood, which I think does a, a wonderful job for our community. So I, I really appreciate the board supporting, uh, that, um, tax relief for that organization also.
Mr. Day, you have anything? Ms. Ayers?
Um, no, no.
That's low, that's surder.
No, sir, except I, I did put in your notes just to close this meeting and start another, since the work session was not advertised at a specific time, just continue into the workshop.
Just continue into it. Just continue?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Hoffman, you have any there? All right. All right, so at this point, we will just continue into work session on, uh, the county's branding project. And Ms. Flint, do you want to?
Chairman, members of the board, online with us today is Gemma and Ian with Haven. They are going to Haven Creative Air Marketing Firm. They are going to go through, um, the results of the surveys that were done, but the internal and the third stakeholder surveys along with the community survey and detail the pro- proposed taglines and the brand pillars. Um, so I am going to actually turn that over to them, let them do their presentation. And if you have any questions following that, we'll answer this for you.
Good evening. Thanks for your time. Let me pull up my presentation.
You're going to need to speak up just a little bit, please.
Okay, um, can you hear me now?
Uh, I'm going to work on.
Just one second, Ian. We're going to adjust the volume.
Let's try that now.
Can you hear me better now?
That's better. Thank you.
Wonderful. Um, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for having us today. As, uh, Brandy mentioned, my name's Ian Redman. I'm the Strategy Director for Haven Creative. Also on the call is Gemma Pisano, our Creative Design Manager. Um, and we are very excited to be here today. Um, as Brandy mentioned, we're going to talk a little bit about what we've done so far with our branding project. And then I'm going to walk through, um, the draft language that we have to present to you for, uh, Brit, brand pillars, uh, story and taglines. And there are a few options for taglines that we want to present to the board for your consideration and deliberation, um, on your time. And Brandy will work with you in terms of next steps for that. But, um, without kind of further ado, I just want to briefly introduce Haven. I know some of you are familiar with us. We're based in Charlotte, North Carolina. We've been in business for about ten years and we started this project with Rockbridge County back in, um, July of this year. In, uh, July, we came to Rockbridge County and did a half-day strategy session with several members of the community, uh, where we really learned more about what the priorities and goals of the branding project would be as well as learning. Uh, where we really learned more about what the priorities and goals of the branding project would be as well as learning more about messaging and wording that. County leaders want to, um, be known for in this branding platform. We also did a, uh, panel interview with about 15 members of the community through the area chamber of commerce. And did a community tour to learn more about Rockbridge County. Uh, in the week since, we've done a trio of surveys. The first two were more open-ended surveys designed to really get detailed input from both county staff. As well as community stakeholders. Um, we took those findings, we had about 40 or so responses between those two surveys. And launched a community-wide survey which netted 292 responses, um, which was open to the public. Anyone was able to take it. And that survey was live, um, for about three weeks where we were able to generate and gather those responses. Um, our margin of error in results was approximately eight percent for the survey. And, um, for us, that's really good. We want to be somewhere in that eight to 10% margin of error, which means that if we get 20% of residents who say. They feel really strongly about this word or color, we can assume between 12% and 28% of the population feels that way most of the time. So, um, the biggest thing that we asked in our community-wide survey was what do people think when they think about Rockbridge County? And this survey response to us was the most illuminating, um, question of the group. We. When we think about branding, most people think about a logo, a tagline, maybe a few words here or there. Really branding is about perception. What are people saying about you when you're not in the room, when you're not the one speaking? And when we. Want residents, businesses and tourists to think about Rockbridge, what are those words that we want them to use when they describe the county? Currently, how respondents respond, um, answered the question, what three words come to mind? You can see the results on the screen here, but. Overwhelmingly, the response was beautiful, mountains, rural, home, community. Um, we ask these questions several different ways. What emotions come to mind? What personalities or brands do you think make the most sense for, um, Rockbridge County? And overwhelmingly, we got some of the very consistent answers for beautiful mountains, rural home. We took this survey data and we took the conversations that we had back in July with our half-day strategy session and with our. Um, panel interviews and we went into what we call brand strategy. And this is really, what is the perception, the words that we want to build? Um, everything I'm about to show you is a draft, um, has not been approved yet. Um, this is work we've been, uh, doing with Brandy and her committee. To really get a sense for where we think we should be going with the brand messaging. So that's what I'm about to show you next. The first thing I want to talk about are brand pillars. Um, a brand is a platform that we use to message towards different priorities. And the foundational element to any brand are what we call brand pillars. These are like the core values or. Features or traits that we want to preserve in the county and hold dear no matter what. Um, these are also the measuring sticks in which we encourage county officials to make decisions towards the future against. And I'll explain what that means a little bit, but these are those foundational elements. In all of our research and reading and learning and surveying, we found three really core. Obvious brand pillars for Rockbridge County that we're proposing today. Naturally beautiful, historically connected and rooted in community. And I'll explain what each of those means. Um, I believe you have a printout of this in case this is really small. I understand that, uh, screen's kind of far away, but I'll walk you through each one of these. Naturally beautiful. Rockbridge County is a place of immense natural beauty. Gemma and I saw that when we toured the community ourselves. Um, we really think that its geographic position between Shenandoah Valley and the Blue Ridge Mountain are something that, that should be celebrated, preserved, cherished and stand out. Um, it has almost a scenic backyard and we don't want to take that for granted, which is why this brand pillar is so important to the community. Um, why we think it makes sense as part of that platform that we're proposing today. Historically connected, there's been a lot of history that's happened in Rockbridge. It's shaped and formed all of, um. Everything that's happened in the community and that tie is really important. From the earliest days with Native American populations. Um, all the way to more modern history. Rockbridge is a place where history happens and you're connected to that history. And then finally rooted in community. And to me, this is the biggest, most important pillar of the three that we've uncovered. And this is the feeling that we got when we were talking to residents, business owners in the surveys. When you're in Rockbridge, you're at home. It really feels like a place where you want to be, where you want to stay, where you want to move. And whether you're looking to live here permanently or just visit, one of the things about Rockbridge is that it's people and the welcoming community that you've built here. Really stand out and that's why we think this pillar makes a lot of sense and is the key to. Um, kind of round out these three core values for the Rockbridge brand. Economic development's obviously a really big priority now. Um, and moving residents into the community was something that was explained to us as a key goal for the county. Tourism I know is its own separate organization, but a brand plays into all of these different aspects of priority for the county. And we want to make sure that the brand identity that we create in this project really speaks to a long-lasting, permanent. Platform for the county to achieve all of its goals. In a lot of ways, when you're thinking about economic decisions or whether or not you want to approve or deny a development, whether you want to make a capital investment or. Launch a new marketing campaign to attract businesses, residents or tourists, really. What you want to do is make sure that any decisions you're making are run through these three pillars. And that's kind of what I meant by a, a measuring stick for priorities. When you think about, okay, well, we have this opportunity, do we want to make the investment? The questions that you can ask yourself with this brand pillar are, does it help us preserve and celebrate our natural beauty? Does it respect or prioritize our historical connections? Does it allow us to look forward? And does it maintain that sense of community and welcome feeling and the people that we have here? And if it's a no to any of those questions about whether or not this project or initiative you're considering, it may not work with your brand or it may be a chance for you to say. Are we living up to our brand or is this truly where we want to be as a community? Brand pillars are. A moment in time, but they're also that measuring stick for how we move forward through the future with our brand. Building on our brand pillars, we have our brand story and a brand story is the narrative at large of how we describe. The community, how we describe the brand and the organization. Um, but while I'm going to read this to you in a moment, I do want to preface this draft brand story by saying that. Typically, a brand story is not used word for word in every application. This really is about the themes and the words and the feelings that we want to see. In branded communication moving forward. So. I'm going to read the brand story in whole for the record and then I want to talk about taglines next. It's hard to find a place in Rockbridge County that isn't filled with natural beauty and a rich history. And that is what so many people love about this place. Seated in the Blue Ridge Mountains at the southern end of the Shenandoah Valley, Rockbridge is a place defined by its natural features. But it's also defined by the welcoming people who call Rockbridge home. Home to the beautiful vibrant life that so many build here, home to the historical events that have shaped the community. It's also home to potential. Located along two major interstates, Rockbridge sits at the intersection of abundance and opportunity. Whether you live here, work here, or are just visiting, Rockbridge is naturally connected to everything you want. Again, all of this is draft language. I'm just presenting so that you can consider, talk about and deliberate as a board. We welcome any feedback. That you may have, but this is really based on that community survey and all the information that we've gathered and what we're presenting now. We think really ties strongly to what we heard from the community. All of this ties into our tagline options. Um, we have three, well, we feel are strong possibilities for the board to consider and think about. Um, the first one is naturally connected and you may have heard that phrase pop out in the brand story. Really, this is about all of the people, the connections between places, between opportunities, the natural resources. Tying together and celebrating all of those, um, benefits and. Values and opportunities that Rockbridge offers. It's all naturally connected right here in one place. And that's why this tagline we think. Um, is one of the best options moving forward that we're presenting to you to consider. Rooted in possibility plays with that same kind of connotation of. There are so many possibilities here in Rockbridge, whether you're moving here, looking to start a business, just visiting. Really, this is a place of opportunity and possibility. If you can imagine it, we can probably make it happen here in the county. And then a bridge to more. No matter what you're looking for, Rockbridge has the opportunity to bridge you to what you want to be. Whether that is a nice place to live, a great place to live, or a great place to open a business or move your. Move your firm and do work here or visit and explore and adventure. The brand platform has to meet all three of those angles. And I think each one of these gives you a strong candidate to do that. And then we can also take these taglines and tie them back into the branding even more so. And in that brand story. Um, you might've seen some of these words play out in the brand pillars and the story that I presented. We can tweak those further depending on which tagline you think makes the most sense. Um, I do want to preface this by saying that each tagline is really a small piece of the brand. This may be like. Attached to the bottom of your logo or on your website or on social media. But a tagline is, is the, kind of the finishing bow of the brand, but it really does have that kind of first handshake type effect. To a lot of the interactions that your target audiences have. Um, I want to show you an example of how we tie in that, um, other alternate tagline to the brand story. So you'll see here, it's just a simple tweak of that last sentence, whether you live here, work here or just visiting, Rockbridge is rooted in possibility. Rockbridge offers a bridge to more. Those are some of the ways that we can tie those tagline options into the full brand platform and make it stand out. Make everything flow together really nicely. Again, all of this is draft. It's open for feedback. We're really excited for your thoughts and considerations and I'm. Happy to answer any questions tonight if you have them. I do know I'm keeping you all from dinner, so I'm sorry that. Uh, if any minutes that you spend having to talk to me keeps you from, from food or, or rest, but I'm happy to stay as long as you'd like and answer any questions you have.
Yeah, we, we appreciate the, uh, the information. And I wanted to recognize while we're here that the committee that's been working on this, obviously, uh, Ms. Flint has been leading the discussion on that. Uh, Mr. Lewis and myself, but Chief Ramsey and Ms. Clark ha- have been, uh. At every meeting and have offered, uh, exceptional feedback and, and, uh. Have really helped the process. So they're here. I wanted to recognize them, uh. And also give the board members, you know, opportunity to ask any questions, not only of. Haven and Ian who, who are presenting, but also of the committee members. Have any questions, comments, feedback, anything that you'd like to offer?
I will add that the committee did like naturally connected more than the other two options. So I'll just throw that out there.
I'm just curious why. Was that unanimous?
Yeah, after some discussion, it was. It was unanimous. I like a bridge to more, but the more I thought about that, it just made me feel like we were leaving Rockbridge County. A bridge to more, like you're just here temporarily and then you're leaving, um, was my thought process on that one. And I mean.
I, I would just say I was conflicted between the first two as a, as a farmer myself, the rooted term is, uh, ve- very dear to me, but. Um, I, I, I just appreciated the. The naturally connected one. It, 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 to me, it just hit.
Connected to me, I mean.
All of it's, that, and that's exactly, what's next that, that you thought we could be connected to? You, you stopped. I was just wondering.
No, I mean, it's, it's not as clear to, I mean, I guess if they're having it, it, no, a rooted impossibility is, is, is my preference. I like a bridge to. To more until you just said that. Till you just said it's going the other direction. Um, and it also refers to a deer. You know, it's hard not to escape that it's natural bridge centric and not. Um, so rooted in possibility, but naturally connected, connected to each other, connected.
And so that was, and I don't want to put Jean on the spot, but I will. Really good explanation of how it can be tied to different things. So naturally connected, not just like the natural bridge, but in nature or Rockbridge outdoors and.
Brandy? Brandy, can I take this one?
Hang on one second again.
I don't think we're going to keep, pick you up unless you're speaking in the mic. I'm sorry.
Sorry, Jean.
You retired from all of it.
That was the one I was drawn to because I could see it applied to so many different areas, whether it's our broadband. Whether it's our communities that are connected, whether it's, you know, our highways that connect us, there are so many things that pull us together. And I think we're stronger. Because we do have all those. Fellow. Localities, we have those, those different parts of our community that pull us all together. And so that's what in my mind made us, made that a stronger one. I hear what you're saying about. Rooted in possibility, but you weren't the fat baby sister to big mean brothers. You used to say when dinner was served, get in here, root hog or die.
Correct.
One of the things with taglines that we like to do when we're building them is think through, how can we take a tagline and evolve it for different campaigns or ideas? And with each of these taglines, there's an opportunity to play further and make it into a broader marketing campaign. So you could do something like. Naturally connected to business resources or naturally connected to economic opportunity, naturally connected to good paying jobs, to. Career opportunities, naturally connected to adventure, um, rooted in adventure, rooted in economic opportunity. Um, a bridge to possibility, a bridge to economic growth. There's different ways that we play with taglines to allow us to meet those different needs and goals that we have. Um, we use actually when we're designing, uh, taglines and coming up with them, we use kind of that framework. To make sure that we're hitting something that allows the brand platform to have more than one purpose or meet more than one campaign or marketing need. Um, one of our other clients is a, a city in Illinois and their tagline is find it all in Alito. And we're working with them right now to launch an economic development campaign that is find opportunity in Alito. Aimed at recruiting businesses to move into their historic downtown. I think with each of these tagline opportunities, you have the opportunity to do similar things where you take that tagline. And you play with it within the brand language to really target that core audience that you're trying to reach. Whether that's economic opportunities, residents, whether you're trying to bu- bring together all of your townships and cities. Um, you know, I think you have that ability to play in each of these tagline platforms to meet whatever need you have.
Yeah, when. When Brandy was talking to me about, I mean, naturally connected just kind of. Seemed to pop a little bit more for, for me. Uh, the, the rooted impossibility and a bridge to more. I didn't necessarily like either one, but I liked the combination, like, like bridging opportunity and possibility or, or something like that because. It is rock bridge. It is, you know, the natural bridge, you know. A play on words there possibly, you know, some sort of combination of those two. Uh, might be something to look, look at, but.
Mr. Chairman, uh, you did acknowledge that members of the committee, uh, Chief Ramsey, did you have anything you'd like to add? I'm just putting you on the spot. If you don't, okay. Thank you. I, I just, if there was something you felt strongly about.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it, Brandy, at risk of, um. Uh, trying to explain the diagram without showing it, I just kind of thought when you talk about naturally connected and, and how everything fits together, if you, it just came to me, if you can imagine. The spokes on a wheel and you got. Six or seven different, different sized bicycle wheels with the spokes all. Going out in the vector from one spoke going to another spoke and then down the vector from another spoke extending that. That spoke down into the center of another one. extending that, that spoke down into the center of another one.
Either that or one shoulder, another one.
You know, I'm, I'm just thinking how, how history intersects with culture, which intersects with the outdoors, which intersects with business and education and recreation and all those things. And they're all connected. And that, just in talking about this, that's kind of what I envisioned. It's something that could, could be in a schematic.
And I like that, you know, when you say it, everybody comes up with something different. Like you just came up with the wheel. And so for me, it just was naturally connected all the way around, just everything connected within the county. Like the fire departments, even though they're in separate locations, they're all naturally connected because they're part of our fire and rescue. And so that's how I visualized it was just like Jane said, it's the natural connection. So that's the reason why I liked it.
Naturally connected and rooted in possibility.
I just, I, I got excited when Ian presented this last week or week before last. Does anybody get excited when they see this stuff? Dan, I can see it on your face. You know, I just, the thought that we'll have something cohesive, what, no matter which one it is, that kind of pulls it all together, just kind of, you know, makes me want to tear up, David.
Well, I, I understand where you're coming from because, you know, for a long time, you know, we've, we've had different entities or different groups trying to move forward. And hopefully, you know, they were always pulling in the same direction, but that's not always the case. With something like this where you can kind of garner everybody, here's the same piece of rope, pull on it in the same direction to move us forward, you know? So I, I, I agree with you that that's the excitement to me that, you know, this can provide a path forward to bigger and better and more awesome things for Rockbridge County. There was, also, I don't think Ian touched on it, but there was early on in our discussions, we, we had the discussion about whether it should be Rockbridge County or County of Rockbridge. And we made that decision to, to go with Rockbridge County. And we hope that that's supported from some, from everybody. There's different ways that, you know, things are said. And again, it's just if you can narrow it down and just make one, one path, it helps. So that's why you're seeing a bunch of stuff, Rockbridge County, not County of Rockbridge. Not that it's a big difference, but.
And so is the idea that you would definitely only use one? I mean, you couldn't use naturally connected and rooted in possibility as, because those two things together, one is that you're all, you know, you're connected, but we're all moving towards possibility. Yeah, I mean, you have to pick, is, do people never use both? Is a tagline exactly always the same, I guess is what I'm saying. Is that what, Ian, I'm asking you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. So I think we could look at compounding taglines, but I think the shorter and the more memorable, the better a tagline is. However, it doesn't mean we have to lose any of this language. We could still use the phrase rooted in possibility in other aspects of the brand messaging. If say we went with naturally connected and vice versa. I would say we wouldn't lead with naturally connected as the tagline. And then in a similar use later on, use rooted in possibility. Consistency is really important, but we could still use that phrase in other aspects of Rockbridge marketing.
There's one, one thing it always remember is the best, the best taglines are something you can fit on the back of a hat.
Depends how big your head is.
No, but I, I, I do think there's, there's, you know, potential opportunity down the road to incorporate more. But I, I really think consistency, you know, especially, you know, in, in the kickoff, you want it to be one.
And it's the same reason we talked about County of Rockbridge versus Rockbridge County. Like a lot of my stuff says County of Rockbridge, but everything else can say Rockbridge County. So it's just that consistency, it's the same thing, but having that consistency is recognizable. And so that's the point in trying to pick one and just continue with one is keep that as something that's recognizable.
We're the only Rockbridge County in the United States. Is there a county of Rockbridge?
No.
Yeah. Okay. Did you note that?
No, she said, is there a county of Rockbridge? And I said, no, you're correct.
Oh, I thought you knew that I was correcting me. Okay.
Absolutely not.
So Brandy, from, from us tonight, what are you looking for?
So what we would like is a consensus on what you would like to go with as far as the tagline goes. But it doesn't have to be tonight. If you want to think about it, take the document with you tonight, look it over. Give me some thoughts and opinions, you can email me, you can call me either one. I'll run them by Ian and Gemma with Haven. And then if we can just, within the next week or so, possibly, you know, come up with a timeline. I don't want to rush it because we want this to be right. We can come up with the tagline and then continue on with the brand book, which would include the colors and the development of a logo.
Ian, is that correct? I thought we had.
Odeon.
Yeah, we needed it, but we've talked about the potential of, you're going to get calendar invites that are adjusted by a week.
That's, that's correct. If, if there is additional time needed, we can adjust accordingly. Currently, we are already adjusting about a week because we wanted to make sure you all had the opportunity to consider and come to a consensus on taglines. I think overall, in terms of timeline, we're still in a really good spot. And as Brandy mentioned, the next step would be art direction and logo creation for the county. And then from that, once we have all of our brand strategy and writing in place and our logo in place, we'll design the overall brand guide that is that foundational document used in all Rockbridge County marketing and branding.
Any additional questions?
Yeah, just to, this is where the committee's recommendation would be naturally connected.
Well, I hold back my excitement and tears. But I want to thank the committee. I think that's the whole purpose of having a committee. And, and I think they've done a great job and that we should support their decision. And, and, you know, we probably, personally, I don't need to wait a week. I mean, I think, you know, they came up, they've been working hard. I've been to one session. I think it's one project that's actually moving at a good pace. And so let's not slow it down, you know, so or do anything that's going to slow it down. So I, I think we should support as presented.
I, I agree with that.
Mr. Day, you okay with that?
Yes, sir.
All right, then we're good to go.
And thank Ms. Lynn for that, keeping that role going steady. She, she, she keeps on us, so it's good.
So Ian, Gemma, if you didn't hear, they have consensus on naturally connected. So if you want to move forward with that, and we're still meeting tomorrow, correct?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good.
Wonderful. Thank you all so much for your time and consideration and your questions.
Thank you for joining us and thank you for your hard work.
Have a great night.
You too. Thank you.
Brandy, is there anything else you'd like to add or?
That is it. Thank you guys so much. I really appreciate it. I like Jean, this has been something I've wanted for years and years. So I am extremely excited to watch it move forward.
And I, I'd just like to make a point, I was the one that held Brandy back on that a little bit because she had originally said, asking for a decision. And I said, well, let's just put it in front of the board. If they organically like it, then they will let you know. And that's exactly what you all did. Thank you.
One more comment on, on that, if I could, then I referenced Chief Ramsey earlier. Something that enlightened me in the process of having these meetings is how, how, how far the reach is of this logo or, or tagline. And I'm, I'm glad to have him on, on the committee as, you know, it's, it, it comes down to the patch that's going to go on the insignia or be the insignia for the uniform for our fire and rescue staff. You know, it's something that really made me think how, how, how broad and how important this is. So just not trying to put him on the spot again, but just thank you for his input. And it's, it brings a different perspective. You know, we can all get caught up in what's going to be the, what's going on the website or, you know, what this is. And it just, just made me think a little more about how, 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 how big, how big a project it is. Thank you.
Is there any other board comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
A second. All right, Mr. Live?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis? Mr. Day? Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. Now adjourned, everybody, thank you for attending and please be careful going home.